The citizens who worked to raise 1.5 million dollars to build the facility and start the first T. Chapter deserve to be commended for having the vision and the determination to bring such a valuable community asset to our island. The fact that they did not completely understand at that time, the full cost to maintain a facility to the degree that reflects Hilton Head Island's other park assets, along with growing the service program of this magnitude, should not prevent the town from stepping forward now to help support, maintain what has become a treasured community asset. This facility belongs to all of us, and it is serving the significant need of providing after-school and summer programs to children who need it most. Our community is facing a workforce shortage like we've never seen before. Over sixty percent of the children in our country who need to be in after-school programs are not because there are not enough programs available to serve them. Hilton Head Island is no exception. Together, the First T and the Boys and Girls Club are doing all that we can to help provide working parents with after-school and summer childcare programs at affordable prices. We need the town to help us meet this demand and serve the families who are serving us through our workforce. There are considerable funds in this budget allocated to the development of passive parks. As residents, we cherish this kind of peaceful outdoor space, but doesn't it make good sense to use a very small portion of these funds to invest in maintaining a recreational facility that is currently meeting a vital need in our community? As you deliberate this request, please ask yourself, why is it not a good idea to fund a community organization that is helping provide childcare for our workforce? I cannot think of one reason. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Liggins. Mrs. Ms. Darcy Patrick, Ms. Patrick? Darcy Patrick? That hearing will move on to Mr. Hoagland. Skip Hoagland?
This meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live.
Skip Hoagland? Sorry, I did not get a response from Ms. Patrick or Mr. Hoagland. Would you like to move on to the next item?
Are they on the call?
If you're not on the call, I do not see them on the call.
Okay, fine. Yes, move on, please.
Thank you.
Okay, Ron, item number five, review of the fiscal budget for 2022, municipal town budget. Before we start, I'd like to thank Mark for all the time he spent with the council members, including myself, before the budget was written, after the budget was written, with every council member this week, and I thank him for his diligence and his staff that put this together and responded to all our inquiries. With that, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor McCann. Members of Town Council, definite thank you to our finance director who's with me here in the in the conference room today, John Troyer. I will share my screen with you all. I believe you can see the presentation. Mayor, Council, this is the same presentation as I delivered the other evening. It is, in fact, every slide is still in there. Thinking back a little bit, we began, you all began the budget process in January with our finance director projecting the fiscal year 22 revenues, and then department heads proposed fiscal year 22 expenditures. And so, as I present to you today, thank you to a department head and a great staff as they presented this year's fiscal year budget. Mayor alluded to my conversations with you all and meetings with you all. I've also met several times with with various members of staff as I presented and proposed this budget. A quick outline of the presentation, and I'm going to go through these slides a bunch faster, a lot faster than I did at first reading. So either A, please slow me down, and I can always back up as I get through this. The goal tonight, the goal today really is to get through the slides once again, but also to highlight some of those last variables and as well as the feedback I've received today, especially since first reading, in between first reading and today's workshop. So you can see in the budget outline tonight, we dive into budget goals, budget overview, and to remind us all about the review and approval process, keeping in mind that we've budgeted last year during a pandemic and also preparing a budget this year during a pandemic. There are some specific steps that we've taken in-house to make sure that our budget is intact as we prepare for uncertainty and really as we try to limit our risks to our operations and projects in the middle of a pandemic. This presentation is online, so I'm not going to go through all of the all of the various slides, but I think it's important that we always remind ourselves that we're a 54-square-mile town, our per capita income is a little more than $52,000, a median home value of 471,300, and most likely climbing, and about 2.6 million visitors visited us here last year. We have a triple-A bond rating from Moody's and a double-A plus from S&amp;P as well as Fitch, and all of the good reasons for that are listed on this slide, especially our tax base, our fiscal management, our financial position, and our modest debt burden. As I prepare a budget, I always set out various goals, and these goals, as they're listed on this presentation, are your goals, as I see straight out of our comprehensive plan and as they're starting to be driven in and provided in the strategic plan. We want to definitely deliver your strategic plan priorities. We want to enhance our customer service and satisfaction. We need to continue to invest in capital projects and use our funds as a catalyst to implement that change and improvement in our community. I'll just keep going. Of course, the budget is broken down into four funds, our operating funds and general fund, stormwater utility derived mostly from stormwater utility fees, our CIP program, and then our debt, all of our various sources of general obligation and other and other types of debt. The budget proposed to you is $96 million, $96,838,322. You can see it in the bold text on the fiscal year 22 proposed budget. It is a 27.5% change of budget if you compare it to last year's original, and it is a 12.6% overall decrease if compared to last year's revised as as we moved into last year, there was a budget amendment. There's various sources of consolidated revenues. I think this sheet does the best job of explaining what those are. So these are the consolidated revenues in our budget that make up the $96.8 million budget request. The revenues are, for the most part, property taxes, licensing and fees, various local government funds transferred from the state, as well as transfers in from all of our various fees and taxes, as those are shown in the far-left column. Mayor Council, as I said, I'm going to jump through some of these slides and get into some of the nuts and bolts of this. I know that we've taken a strong look at our revenues and our projections. I think that's so important and so important for us to focus on, and I believe that we have. We have proposed a budget that relies upon revenues that have been not overly projected. Conservative is the number, is the word I'm searching for. Conservatively, we have proposed those revenues, and you can see from property taxes with the with the 2% raise all the way down on that sheet. Expenditures, so how are we using our dollars? You can see the personnel benefits, operating, make up for a substantial portion of our of our budget request from an operating standpoint. And further, as we move down this this page, this slide, you can see the various sources of expenditures, uses of funds for projects, beach management, pathway, roadway, parks, and facilities as well as fleet management. A question was asked of me during some recent conversations with council to allude to or to explain the funding for natural disasters, what funds are available. And you can see on here that we have a natural disaster fund balance, a little more than 32 million, fund balance of beach preservation fees, a little more than 13 million, for a total funds readily readily available of nearly $46 million with debt capacity and an additional 20. And so that question was asked for me, and I felt important, I felt that it was important to provide to you a slide that simply outlines that. The budget presented to you tonight is balanced, as I said, conservative revenue projections and very careful expenditure choices. We've reduced some areas significantly, and I have directed some of those funds to make some some better and different impacts in our community, including some maintenance funds. Property tax millage remains the same, so I'm not proposing a budget to you that raises millage, except with the reminder that this is the last year of the five mills for the five years disaster recovery funds. There are several and various long-range planning initiatives identified through the first reading and through our conversations in the general fund as well as the capital improvement fund, and then I will dive in a little further as I get into CIP to explain the public infrastructure investment. It maintains our strategic interagency partnerships as they're listed on the screen, Island Rec, Postal Discovery, USCV through the ambassador program, Palmetto Breeze through our urban and rural match for their services, Solicitor Stone's program for career criminal and multidisciplinary court, and as well, it adds to this year's budget simply for some clarity for my purposes, the Heritage Classic Foundation. As we get to the general fund, we know that that's the operating account. Our millage rates have remained the same for the last few years at 28.10, and you can see here on the far-right side that that is for natural disaster, five mills, debt service 5.9, general fund 17.2. Our mill value is going up. I'm curious to see what the mill value does in fiscal year 23, but the projection for fiscal year 22 is $917,494 per mill. And this is the third in the row, third year in a row at the same mill rate. So this yields on a on a on a sample property tax bill for a median home value of 471,000 and change of $529.74 to the town of Hilton Head Island, which is really 20% of the property taxpayer tax bill. And there's various sources of general fund revenues. Our operating account is made up of property taxes, ATAX, licensing and various fees and service fees, including EMS, beach services, and some things like that. You can see that a general fund proposed budget to you was $43,984,657.
The broadcast of Facebook Live has stopped.
I'm sorry, Mayor Council, I'm just hearing a little kickback on our Facebook Live recording. I hope we're still live on Facebook. I think Krista's checking on that. If we're not Krista, it's important. We just put that back up there at a certain time. I know this is being recorded.
Yes.
Property taxes have increased over time. Local ATAX revenues have increased definitely from 3.5 million a couple of years ago to close to 4 million. Our business licenses have fluctuated, especially as we looked at last year with a peak and a spike, and then and then a decline. Our franchise fees have dipped, and are climbing. Our general fund permit revenue is about flat. It's gone up, it's gone down, it goes up. That's typically how that that is. It's just following the market trends. EMS revenue, $1.7 million. The big dip with those revenues is simply because I think everything stopped and slowed down for several months as COVID, as the pandemic spiked in our communities and throughout the country. Our investment investments have decreased from, you know, a couple of years ago, 307,000 to about 10% of that today, simply because interest rates have significantly decreased in where when where these funds are held. Other miscellaneous revenues, intergovernmental, beach services, electric franchise fees have really stabilized. And so you can see that our general fund, the majority of our budget, the majority of our operating account is salaries, benefits, and operating, with some various contracted public safety and interagency partnerships. We we have contributed in years past, two point, well, in fiscal year 21, 1.7, almost 1.8 for interagency partnerships, in this, as a as a basis on the original budget, and this year, I'm proposing a budget of in little in excess of $2.2 million. And I'll explain a little bit of that. What's interesting on on here a little bit is there are, there aren't large amounts. But a purposeful And while I think it's a, it's it's a request that can be made, I have heard um from various council members um that based upon the legality of the agreement, the operating agreement, which is really the partnership structure. Then getting back to the table to have further discussions with First T. And that is going to be one of the very first things that I do post workshop and leading into second and final reading. Is is put us and First T back at the table to simply take a look at the original agreement. And to really understand the request a lot better from my perspective, um, not making excuses, but two and a half months in, I think it's important. And I don't think that this is a, a, a simple budget ask. Simply because there is a partnership agreement that reads differently than this budget ask. And with all due respect, I think that the sooner we simply sit down um review those terms and then I could therefore make some recommendations and have some further conversations with council. I think that's, that's our best avenue. The Sandbox has also made a request uh and and those funds are not in this budget. In fact, I believe that those funds um could be accomplished through the second round of ATAX funds that are available and we've communicated that. Josh uh thankfully has communicated that to Sandbox. This budget, uh, the presentation again has been online. It's on our website. Uh, full disclosure, it includes up to three percent performance uh performance based salary adjustments that would be effective in January. Um, provides three full time firefighter positions. It aligns our holidays with Beaufort County um and provides some outsourcing so that we don't have to bring full time employees on board. Um, not knowing what the market holds in the future, it provides outsourcing of building and plan review, which we desperately need help with. As we take a look at our stormwater fund, we know that the majority of those uh funds are from the stormwater utility fees. Our rate has remained the same for a while. Our rate is competitive. It's uh it's on the far right side of your screen and you can see the administrative fee as well as the impervious and gross area accounts. Um, we have a significant amount of stormwater responsibility, especially because of the barrier island, um, the sensitivity of being a barrier island. And and most importantly, we have an MS four program, which is this is a federal mandate, an unfunded federal mandate. And we provide significant review and inspection for stormwater uh related responsibilities as part of that, as part of that program. So the fees this year in the budget is, as you can see, four point nine million dollars prior year funds, which were utilization of fund balance of a, of a, well, a, a, a single use at five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, not for operating, not to balance the budget for operating, but to simply request the use of those funds to transfer to CIP for stormwater related projects. And so we have a five point five million dollar proposed stormwater utility budget. You can see all the various ways those funds are used. I think this this depicts a, a, a good look that most of those funds are transferred out to CIP. And that a significant, or I would say a majority of those funds are transferred out to CIP. And another significant tranche of those funds are to pay the principal and interest on already incurred stormwater related debt. We also fund salaries and benefits as well as operating costs. And the stormwater team has asked for a vehicle, so a capital expense this year for a vehicle that is getting uh older uh each year and is spending more time in the shop than not. And then also um you can see that the modeling as well as the maintenance and some pump station projects also make up for um this uh account. We transfer a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars out to general fund. And those hundred and fifty five thousand dollars transferred to general fund are for staff member salary and expense that work in, work on stormwater related projects and policies and responsibilities. But not full time, so we wouldn't incur them into the full uh account of salaries and benefits, but instead we use it in general fund. We've also transferred out this year, which is a, a different look this year. It will help me communicate to you as council, town council, and it will help me communicate to the community what our entire CIP program is. And that does include almost two point one million dollars of stormwater uh related projects. Our CIP program, um, working with you all and taking a, a, a bunch of exciting notes during your strategic plan workshop. Even before I formally joined uh you here, I've taken some good notes. I've had the conversations with the CIP team, um, Jeff Buckle, Jennifer Ray. Definitely Josh and Sean, trying to understand what our CIP program is in fiscal year twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. And I am proud and and pleased to present to you the fiscal year twenty two CIP program. That is twenty eight million dollars, nine thousand and ninety, twenty eight million, nine thousand and ninety nine dollars. You see that um the sources of funds are from all of our various CIP funds, traffic and impact fees. The significant portion of our budget here is H tax. Annualized our bond proceeds, which are from, from prior bonds. Um, we have three hundred and forty seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars earmarked for grants. That is the CDVG grant, and I think a little bit of change. Please know that I'm simply budgeting what I know right now. I have a strong desire and Sean and and Marcy are aware of it, the team here is aware of it, that that I have a significant um goal to greatly improve that grant uh revenue by by mid budget cycle, definitely by this time next year. We're also transferring in um beach preservation fees, H tax, our TIF funds. A little bit of general fund, as I mentioned, a little bit of road usage fee and a significant portion of the electric tran- franchise fee. We still have a healthy fund balance in on those accounts. And I also mentioned to you the stormwater utility fee transfer as I discussed stormwater a little bit ago. Those funds are being used in these various portfolios of projects. So beach management um remains a very high priority. Uh, two point three million, pathway management, nine hundred thousand. Our pathways are old. Our pathways are well connected, but I see opportunities to make them safer and more relevant. Especially perhaps with some connections and I talked a little bit about that at first reading, definitely the boggy gut connection is important as well as various others. Um, we have some pathway planning underway. We also have some real construction under underway in the next fiscal year plan. Roadway management of five point four million, um, park management of eight point seven. Facility and equipment at three point eight and fleet management at six point six. There are some soft cost dollars for land acquisition traditionally, and as I understand it through uh John Troyer. There are soft costs carried in the CIP and those soft costs um simply allow us to conduct the due diligence and the assessment of properties. But as town council would acquire properties, it would be through a budget amendment um process. The projects broken out a little bit and listed from this page. Uh, well, from the revenues to the actual expenditures. Sorry, my slides are moving different, different speeds on the screen. And so I won't go through all of this. I went through this pretty closely in first reading or I I perhaps a little slower in first reading, I should say. But you can see from beach management and monitoring and beach re nourishment all the way down to um, an account for workforce housing, workforce and affordable housing in a as an incentive and credit um is now listed in this CIP program. Our projects are, in my opinion, uh, well, spread out throughout our wonderful community all across Hilton Head Island. This isn't up here for us to squint and look at, but it is, it is important because it, it, it does a good job to show the various funding sources. So not every fund can build every project. ATAX as a funding source can't build certain projects. So I thought it was important to show where we're using our various funds, general fund um and and other and others. And so I'm not necessarily needing to go through every single slide here, but so that you don't have to squint. We have broken them out and we have clearly showed the project name. Any carry forward, any new funding request for a total fiscal year twenty two. I think it's important to show you all the project scope. So the one thing that always jumps out at me as the budget gets adopted. Everybody's excited to see a, their, their favorite project on the list. And then we realize the project life cycle for the next fiscal year is simply going to be due diligence, planning, design and permitting and no construction. And so, so that we're clear. I've worked with our, our team here to the best of our ability to let you know what that project scope is. Which more or less can tell you what we're doing and to a degree, the detail that we'll be working on it in this next fiscal year. And so as we go through all the various projects, that project scope should um should help with that. I know tonight's a workshop, uh, well, debt, debt service. So, so tonight's a workshop and I can always back up and go through any specific project you all would like me to go through. Um, lastly, and and for a couple more minutes, I think it's important, we talk about debt service tonight in the workshop. Um, I've mentioned that we have various different sources of funds uh or various sources of debt. We also have a triple A rating, which is the highest available for Moody's, which is so significant. And that we're working on triple A from the other two. This budget, different than last, assumes or proposes at at least uh leasing of of fire rescue vehicles as part of the CIP. And so we carry that and capture that in our debt simply because of a ten year lease term. These are all of our various sources of revenue that pay our debt. And this is probably the most important sheet that we could look at as, as we try to make sense of our future, let alone fiscal year twenty one. We know that for our geo bonds, we're paying in principle and interest, close to ten million dollars, nine point nine eight one and change. And our principal payment is close to eight million of that. Same scenario with uh our special obligation bonds right here, nine point three million with seven point six in a small stormwater uh account compared to the others, one point three is still significant. But of the one point three, a hundred thousand is interest and one point two. So our financial position next year out of, out of these total funds, our financial position um in our a- ability to, in our debt capacity is going to be so much more significant this year than last. And, and as we, as we pay twenty million, six hundred thousand dollars, you can you can see that the great majority of it is principal. So this time next year, I think we will be in in great shape. Tonight is the council budget workshop, so in between May fourth was last week, um, looking at first reading and tonight, I've met with you all, town council members. I, I summarized a lot of our discussion and if there aren't any questions. I would like to just perhaps highlight some of those discussion points. Some of which are statements and some of which I, I believe need some discussion and some direction in this budget as I proceed um to fiscal year. Or I should say to, to second and final reading. Um, so with that being said, Mayor Council, would it be appropriate that I just go through my notes?
Yes.
Okay. So I heard that Mid Island redevelopment area and the park is our highest priority. The park, the redevelopment strategy, and there are significant funds in the capital improvement program for that. I've also heard that Crossings Park and Chaplain Park remain very, very important. Although that Mid Island um is something that council, the majority of council wants me and staff to get out of the gate on the fastest. At Crossings and Chaplain, there's so much opportunity to add pickleball courts. Um, some training areas, including even a football goalpost. Um, to think through our ability to establish some, some turf fields and clean up those two parks is very important. There was an inquiry on our fund balance for emergency responsiveness and I showed you that slide. I heard that Main Street right of way should remain a very high priority and there's a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for that, more for soft costs and assessment. And, and as I move through workshop and second and final reading and 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 have the clarity and final vote that Main Street should show up in our CIP. I will meet with very soon the Main Street POA to move that acquisition discussion forward. I think there's so much opportunity with that parallel road to William Hilton Parkway. That road's only getting busier and more important to us, so this is a great opportunity. I heard that um in the feedback that the Caligny Beach area parking plan, the implementation is a high priority, yet the CIP or general nor general fund show that. I, I will assure you that it is a priority in, in the in the budget. Josh and I have had several conversations for it. In fact, it is his project. Um, I don't think Josh is giving that away to anybody too soon, too quick, too easy. But I also know that the money's in there. What I will do to adjust so that it's clear is I will make an adjustment to the CIP and general fund if I need to to add that clarity that the Caligny Beach area parking plan study and implementation is in fact a high priority by second reading. So as you see the document by second reading, it will show that. That's not a material change. It wouldn't need It wouldn't need a, 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 a first reading yet again. So revising the CIP to clearly show that is something I will do. Um, as I talk about that, please know that this budget, um, as well as already this year, is a significant exercise to clean up our existing beach parks, um, ASAP. There's also interest by several to examine the first T partnership. And so those folks and Ms. Likens and, and, and others, um, Mike that spoke tonight. I'm, I'm very clear on, on your desire for us to get back to the table and talk with council and, and explore that partnership agreement, um, the lease agreement, partnership agreement, what have you. I also had, uh, some significant feedback on the use of funds, the stormwater funds for both Pine Island and Hilton Head plantation as a beach re nourishment slash really stormwater maintenance, um, priority as well as dredging in Seapines Harbor Town. Last year, a recital or a section in the budget ordinance showed the same way it showed this year. In fact, it's section five and it, and it was very clear that those funds are budgeted for those two community projects. Um, there was a suggestion to remove the success, this, the recital, excuse me, but my suggestion is to leave the funds and clarify them in the CIP, remove the recital and be clear on what we determined to be the project scope on both projects for beach re nourishment and, 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 and public improvement. Um, I would suggest that if we do that, that I would work with Hilton Head plantation, perhaps even Seapines to establish a partnership agreement and clearly define our expectations. And so that, that was significantly talked about and we can go back to that if, if, if you would like, as I get through my notes. There was some discussion on the use of CIP funds for crosswalk lighting. And so the, the, the big picture here is, and I truly believe in this and, and, and will, and will provide, um, and will provide this for you in this budget year is that we provide a, or that we establish a uniform plan on crosswalk lighting and roadways and crosswalks and not just incremental improvements, incremental disjointed improvements, I think are netting us exactly that incremental disjointed improvements. And they are improvements, but the, the feedback from council was establish a plan. Um, I also heard that there was a community survey conducted for lighting treatment at Yakov and I haven't seen those survey results. So I think we can learn a little bit from, or I can even learn a little bit, uh, about the feedback on the lighting treatment at Yakov and when I, I will also share that with you all. There was not support for the Burks Beach crosswalk lighting plan, and I say that on purpose, although such a minor issue in relative to our total budget. But one thing with this plan that we need to do is take a look at all of these various mid-block crosswalks on our island and make sure that they're in good locations according to a plan and that they're uniform and that they're well lit. And so that's really where that feedback came in. I think that needs a lot of assessment, um, and that we need to establish a comprehensive traffic calming plan for our corridors, pathways and connect our parks and open spaces to that. There was also discussion that, um, I made, I made the point that thirteen full-time employees were requested. However, our budget supports three proposed and that's two firemen out of the gate in July and one in January, that there be future position considerations, more operational improvements in our parks, in our recreation, as well as in our pathways and, and, and whatnot. So I will definitely earmark those, keep those in mind and have a lot of conversation with you all as we get into our strategic plan and subsequent budget years. There was a request for additional housing funds that show up in our CIP in a much greater amount than what's proposed and that potentially, um, H tax, uh, use or and or ATAX use, uh, in our future could potentially be used differently and more subsequently, uh, more substantially, I should say, for, for housing. And of course, that, that those both would require a South Carolina code amendment. There, and I mentioned this already, uh, and I strongly believe it, that a request to acquire much more significant grant funds for operations as well as projects and that we need a full court press, those are my words, um, on grant applications. Um, I have some ideas on how to accomplish that. There was a request to fund and expedite the Golegiachi Task Force priorities. I'm proud to let you know, and it's important to let you know, that there are funds in fiscal year twenty-one that are being used and that fiscal year twenty-two funds in the planning, community development office support and achieve those goals. A lot of the work is done in-house, but we do need some consulting money, some legal money and perhaps some funds to help us with those things that staff are not experts in. And so those funds, um, are available in the budget. There was also a request to add additional funds in the CIP for land acquisition. There was twenty thousand dollars in a baseline account last fiscal, which as amended, moved in some land acquisition funds. Um, I put seventy-four thousand dollars and change in there. I think that's the number, um, in this fiscal year proposed. It was suggested that two hundred and fifty per year, two hundred and fifty thousand per year be placed in the CIP as simply a source of funding that grows over time. So as we know, CIP rolls forward unless we, we actively decide that that fund shouldn't. Um, really the message there is, isn't, isn't in my assessment, the difference between seventy-four and two fifty, it's that we're proactive to acquire property, to acquire raw land as, as well as perhaps vacant dilapidated commercial properties. And so I think that's a significant, uh, discussion point. There were also requests to add funds, uh, for the Hilton Head Island Airport experience, both from a experience as well as a, um, capital investment. I need some direction on that, perhaps if not this year, next year, I'm meeting with, um, the airport executive director in, in the coming week or so to really, you know, spend some time getting to know him better, uh, as well as understand the direction that the airport is going in and to have some discussions about our involvement potentially. There was also, and, and I mentioned this, a request for funding and planning and capacity study. Um, while we're working on the mid-island tract and the redevelopment strategy in the park and the various corridors and the various pathways and the various crosswalks, the one thing that I would like to do, um, is, is try to start answering the question of capacity based upon our current zoning framework, uh, our current road network and, and to have some real planning efforts to start understanding our island and the horizon as it relates to capacity. I believe those funds, um, to get going are in this fiscal year budget, both from a general fund and CIP standpoint. Uh, there was some quick feedback that our communications plan, our communications department with the use of general fund, that, that they'd like to see, a council member would like to see a formal plan. And I agree with that. I think that we do a great job. Carolyn and, and, and Renee and Kelly and, and now led by Angie, I think that they are a, a, a great team. We're blessed to have Carolyn with us and, uh, I would like to present to you all in, in a soon enough time, a real communications plan that would include a strategy on what we communicate and who our targeted audiences and also include in that a social media strategy. So stay tuned on that. And that we must establish an inter-agency or a town of Hilton Head Island funding request process for all of the various requests outside of our typical ATAX grant process. And so I think that there's definitely some room, um, for me to make some improvements in, in how those requests are made, should they go to the finance and administrative committee and how those are, are assessed and how those are passed along as a, the feedback, uh, requested from council. Those are the notes and I am available to discuss, um, the points made and or go back to any particular slides. My time is yours. And again, I'm trying to present a budget to you that you're all collectively proud Nope, gotta stop sharing this. Here we go. Okay, let's go over questions from council if there are any at all. Mr. Brown?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, Mr. Orlando and, uh, and staff really appreciate a job well done. A very concise, uh, presentation of a very detailed and involved budget. Um, I appreciate it being as simple as it has been and I appreciate you taking such detailed notes on all of the concerns that council members have had thus far and definitely support you in moving forward. Um, and not just with this budget, but your, your plan of attack, so to speak, to remedy some of the, the items that are, that are still lingering. Um, I am, uh, definitely in support of your workforce housing allocation that you have lined out there. Um, I'd like to see us be more aggressive, of course, but that is definitely something that we can discuss as we move forward with our next affordable housing workshop. Um, the, uh, the, the question that you had about, uh, I guess two hundred and fifty K going towards CIP per year, um, you know, I'm also willing to, to consider that, um, particularly with us having this capacity question at hand, along with our affordable housing crisis. Um, so I, I'd like to dive into that a, a little bit more. And the, uh, the last thing is just simply a, a comment on observation, um, as we strive to get better at this. And again, Mr. Orlando, you've done a great job getting us to a better place here. Um, I know that we're going to be looking at, um, a funding request process for, um, affiliated agencies. Um, and I can appreciate the, the cover letters and the budgets that, uh, those that are requesting have sent to us. But I think as we roll into budget season, um, I'm not necessarily speaking on this year, of course, but in the future, as we roll into budget season, um, those affiliated agencies giving us a full-fledged in-person presentation, I think is appropriate. Um, I've always said that, uh, I can't find a definition of limited service government, um, but because we are, we, we tend to have a lot of other agencies doing work that the public may deem as our responsibility. Um, so just so that we continue to have, uh, not just communication, but also accountability along the way, I think that, that would be appropriate in the future. Those are my comments. And again, Mr. Orlando and staff, great job.
Thank you. Ms. Augens?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first market, uh, once again, an excellent presentation of what's most striking to me is, uh, when I look at where we are on our debt service vehicles and look into the future, uh, and, and recognize that we're paying off a tremendous amount of principal, uh, during the next couple of years, uh, with a lot of prudence, that creates an opportunity, I think, to really think big about what we could do here on the island. And I'd like to see that kind of thinking woven into a, uh, an, an island-wide planning process where, uh, we, we can perhaps take some prudent but bold moves. And I would just encourage all of us to start thinking that way.
Thank you. Ms. Ames?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate what Bill just said. Uh, that's, uh, music to my ears, but let me go to, uh, Mark and John Troyer for the job that they have done. But, uh, I think, I think the public ought to understand that this year's process involved the council members in a much more integral way than we have in the past. And it, it, it hasn't been a mysterious, um, uh, process. Uh, it's been open, uh, as, as Mark shared with us, uh, the feedback that he's received from other council members, I appreciate that because it lets me know what other council members are thinking and then we can develop conversations through that shared understanding. So, uh, again, Mark, I, I really appreciate, uh, the way you've handled this. Um, I'm, I'm very enthusiastic about this budget because what it portends for the community, uh, the significant commitment to planning at all levels, um, and the investment that will come out of that planning bodes well for this community. And if we have the fortitude and courage to think boldly, we really can do something spectacular for this island. And it's, it is a true, a true opportunity that we're putting together at this time. So I, I think that, uh, this is a budget that speaks well to the future of Hilton Head Island. Uh, I have some of my own, uh, wishes that weren't included in this, uh, open space preservation, repurposing of distressed commercial properties, uh, housing. Uh, I had a, uh, I was advocating for a nonprofit, uh, request. Uh, I understand those things will fall into place at the appropriate time. Uh, so I'm, I'm okay, uh, that they aren't included to the extent that I would want them if I were making the decision on my own. I do have one request, which the town manager has already mentioned, and that is understanding in more detail, uh, the choices that council might have in dealing with the Pine Island re nourishment and the Harbor Town dredging. Uh, I was not in favor of that in two thousand and sixteen. I have remained skeptical about whether or not it is a town responsibility to re nourish that beach or to dredge Harbor Town. However, I do think there is a conversation we can have that might make sense for this community. And so I'm looking forward and request the, uh, town managers inquiry and suggestions relative to what we might do in the future in those two, uh, those two areas. But the bottom line for me is that this is a great budget, an optimistic budget for the community. And, uh, I look forward to the information that you will provide us between now and the, uh, June first meeting. Thank you, Mark.
Mrs. Benner?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's just like, um, before and today, as others have said, um, thank you to, uh, Mark and John and the rest of the staff for all of the hard work, for the, um, thorough conversations that we had the opportunity to have with you, that collaborative nature and that transparency. that we had the opportunity to have with you. That collaborative nature and that transparency, I think, will lead to great things coming our way. And the excitement and the optimism is, I think, really starting to bubble up all over. I've spoken to various people who have asked me what my impressions are in terms of how the town is moving along at this point with the new town manager. I can continue to say with great confidence that I have a lot of optimism for the future of Hilton Head Island. And I thank you all for that as we move forward. I too have specific discussions that I'd like to see continue as we revisit existing contracts, so that if there's opportunity to entertain requests like the first T, that we are prepared to look at that closely. So having said that, I'm going to not repeat what everyone else has said and let someone else speak, but I look forward to continuing conversation and successes.
Ms. Lennox?
Thank you, John. I want to say that Mark has been here for two and a half or three months. And through the process of creating and discussing the budget has shown me much more understanding of town operations and town finances than his two and a half months with the town would show. I'm very impressed with that. I continue to be impressed with John Troyer and his staff in his ability to present in a meaningful way almost $100 million budget. And that said, what you heard Mark say is we're going to spend $96.8 million in the upcoming fiscal year. Twenty-one and a half million of that goes to debt service. There's no room in negotiating that amount. That is required principal and interest payments. Thirty-seven, 28, 28, just over $28 million in capital improvements. And that's really broken down into carryforwards, prior-year funds, and new funds this year. That does seem like a lot in one year, but the only net new money coming out of operating funds is about $11 million. And that's routinely what we have spent in the past. Five and a half million in stormwater utility, and that includes just over $2 million in new capital projects. And lastly, the majority of the 96 is just under $44 million in a capital fund, in a general fund budget, which really is the operating account for the town. I spent a number of hours with John and Mark focusing on the revenue and understanding the different sources of revenue and the likelihood that we can meet the revenue budget going forward. And I am comfortable and confident that what is being presented to council and the community is realistic. In addition to that, we've had discussions about any significant variances on the expense side. And I understand the reason for those variances. And I think they also are realistic. I think this is a good way to operate the Town of Hilton Head. I think we have at least monthly discussions over revenue and expenses. And John does a real good job of alerting us to any trends he sees developing and any significant variances, be they favorable and unfavorable. I'm prepared to move forward and look forward to it. I think the capital improvement project budget is exciting. The community and visitors have reacted and responded well to the completion of Celebration Park. And I think we, as we get into the projects that Mark has listed in 2022 CIP, that excitement will continue to carry forward. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Stanford?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo the salute to Mark, to John Troyer, and to the staff for an excellent presentation and effort to educate the council and to answer our questions well in advance, so that this is a well and carefully thought-out budget that's been presented to us. Being somewhat conservative myself, the first thing I look at is no tax increase. We salute that. That is great news. That carries a long way in this community. But when people see that we have a dramatic increase in the annual budget, there are questions about that. And so I think in the final presentation, we need to clarify the transfer of CIP funds, which were deferred in 2021, to make up a large part, or at least a half, I think, of this increase in the budget. The council decided to stop all non-priority CIP projects in 2021, which we had budgeted for, because we were reacting to the pandemic. And so that was a wise move. It turns out that, yes, there was an impact on the town revenues, but nothing like we feared. And that's because our economy here and our tourism economy is so strong. Also, at the final presentation, I think we should emphasize the comparative tax rate of this community and other communities in the Low Country. We have a very low tax rate here. And that's because we have such a solid, strong economy and such a well-run government. I think considering the opportunity we have for some more borrowing moving forward, I certainly echo Bill Harkins' dream of let's think big. Let's think, what can we do to really make this the community that we all want it to be? That'll require the expenditure of some money, but if we can do that without a tax increase and make a big bang, that will carry us a very long way. So the CIP budget, I salute the fact that you emphasized that development of the Mid-Island Tract is the top and first priority. I will confess to being impatient about getting that moving, but these things take time, and I understand that full well. So and then finally, just as a small matter, I see a, an obligation for a lease of a fire engine. First of all, I think leasing equipment like that is a very wise and prudent move because when the lease is over, they can have it back, and we will have the device, the machine, pretty much worn out by that time. But I wonder, do we have to carry the full amount of the lease payments over the entire term of the lease as a debt obligation? Or rather, on an annual budget, do we just include the payments that will need to be made during that year? So some clarification on that sounds like the right thing to me. I am comfortable with this budget. I have spent time with Mark. My questions have been answered. I have focused on revenue. I think the expenditures are the town manager's job. But I have focused on revenues and CIP, and I'm comfortable that the revenue projections that are here are conservative. We're not projecting big increases. And as a matter of fact, in things like the real estate transfer fee and property taxes, my guess is we're going to see a significant increase in those revenues, but we haven't plugged that into the budget because we don't know that it will happen yet. So I salute you for an outstanding budget, a very clear and detailed process, and I'm comfortable with moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Orlando, once again, thank you very much. You and your team, outstanding job you do. Have a motion to adjourn now, please?
Yes, you can.
I'd like to say, I'd like to say a couple of words.
Okay.
Mayor, council, I cannot thank you enough for your feedback today. It's nice to know that I'm on the right track. And like I said, as I started out, this is your budget. This is not my budget alone, and I'm building a budget based upon your collective feedback. I do look forward to getting into the implementation of the budget early into the next fiscal year as we work on all of the various improvements. We thank John, and I really appreciate you all, you all at least letting me know that I'm in the right direction. But I can't end this without saying thank you to Erica and Sundeja. They are behind the scenes, working diligently and really unsung. So Sundeja, Erica, if you're watching, thank you as well. Thank you, Sundeja. Thank you all very much. Have a motion to adjourn, please?
A move.
All day, right here. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Recording has stopped.